6:00 to 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, go to the right call.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell? Alright.
Proclamation?
Yep, I have a proclamation of retirement. Whereas the city of Burlington honors firefighter Darryl Bailey for his long tenure of outstanding service to the citizens of Burlington and the surrounding areas. And whereas firefighter Bailey has been a dependable, loyal, and trustworthy employee for over thirty-two years. And whereas firefighter Darryl Bailey began his employment at the Burlington Fire Department as a firefighter, on November twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-three, obtained his Emergency Medical Technician, EMT certification, and maintained the same his entire career. And whereas firefighter Bailey has demonstrated a high degree of professionalism and devotion to the Burlington Fire Department and the citizens of Burlington. And whereas firefighter Bailey has been a steadfast and reliable firefighter and EMT at many emergencies throughout his career, often placing himself in harm's way while performing his duties for the benefit of the community. And whereas firefighter Bailey has responsibly performed his duties and mentored newer firefighters using his skills and experience to help recruits understand and navigate intricate aspects of emergency operations and responses. And whereas firefighter Bailey has always strived to do the best job possible, often under difficult circumstances, keeping foremost in mind the welfare and best interests of citizens he has served while fulfilling his sworn duties. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, do hereby recognize and commend firefighter Darryl Bailey for his devoted, conscientious, and faithful service. We extend our sincere appreciation and our congratulations on a successful career and wish him the very best in retirement. Signed and sealed, this sixth day of June, two thousand sixteen, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
To go along with that, there is a plaque that says, "The City of Burlington hereby honors Darryl Bailey in recognition and appreciation of over thirty-two years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington, retired June first, two thousand sixteen, presented by the Burlington City Council."
Mr. Bailey, come on down. You can clap.
Were you blaming this off?
Somebody up there between cameras. There you go. Thank you. God bless you. Would you please have a word, please? Sure.
Well, hey, thank you. It's been a great career. I'd just like to thank the City of Burlington for giving me the opportunity. You know, working with the city for thirty-two years, it has been a pleasure. I know I can't speak for everybody here, but just working with the men and women that I have worked with, it's been a real honor. And I've worked under three chiefs, Chief Trexel, Chief Clemmons, and Chief Allen. I'd just like to give a shout out or, you know, plug to Chief Bill Allen for giving me the opportunity thirty-three years ago. You know, for me, it's been a great career, not only for myself, but for my family. It's a great job. I mean, you know, every day is different. Every day, we rely on each other. You know, you just never know when it might be your last call, but you're ready for it, and you know you're gonna be there for each other. So with all this, I thank you. It's been a great career.
Awesome. Mr. Scott.
Your Honor, whereas the state of Texas made Juneteenth the first official African-American holiday in the United States in nineteen seventy-eight, and whereas Juneteenth's the oldest African-American holiday observance, and whereas Juneteenth is synonymous with freedom and is observed nationally by many, and whereas Burlington, Iowa branch the NAACP is sponsoring the Juneteenth celebration in Burlington on Saturday, June twentieth, two thousand fifteen, at De Edwin and Gladys White Memorial Park. And whereas the theme for Juneteenth celebration is empowerment the key to our future, now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, as Juneteenth Day. I apologize, there's two different dates in here for the Saturday in Burlington, and ask all citizens in Burlington to help celebrate this event. Sign and seal the sixth day of June, two thousand sixteen. Kathleen, can we get that corrected?
Yeah, I can. I'll send out a new one.
Do we correct it? Mr. Fred Say?
Fred Say's here. For those who don't know, my name is Fred Say. I'm currently the president of the NAACP. On behalf of the NAAC and the people of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for the passing of the proclamation in honor of Juneteenth, the oldest known celebration commencing the end of slavery in the U.S. The NAACP has been celebrating Juneteenth here in Burlington for nineteen years, and the people look forward to a day of fun and celebration. We, the NAACP, also supports upgrades and improvements to the Edwin Gladys White Park, which would be beneficial to the children and the residents in that community. Gladys, I'm sorry, De Edwin Gladys White Memorial Park has been our celebration site for the last nineteen years. We do invite the City of Burlington to bring your lawn chairs and come hang out with us. There'll be music, entertainment, food. Scholarships will be awarded. There'll be games for children, including a basketball free throw contest and much more. So I hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Tonight, I have the privilege of doing two Mayor's Awards. The first, I'm going to do for a special lady. She is not able to make it down for the meeting, so I will hand-deliver this to her. But I'm very excited and I'm looking forward to seeing her tonight. She's a special lady that's done so much for citizens of Burlington, and if you've lived here for longer than fifteen years, I fight it hard-pressed that you would not know of her or had some type of effect of her. So be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You are one of a kind, and all who know you are blessed. Your selflessness and commitment to all people in this community and your love for your fellow man help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June sixth, two thousand and sixteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Ms. Pearl Payne, and I will be delivering this to her personally. The second Mayor's Award tonight, I'm also equally excited to give because this was not, this came from many other people that reached out to me and said, "Hey, we've got to recognize this guy." And whenever I get a chance to recognize a city employee, I like to do that because it's good to know that we've got good employees that are committed to their job. And he happens to be one of many, but he's getting recognized tonight. And apparently, you're doing a heck of a job because it was several people that were speaking about you on your behalf, so I think that says a lot. Be it known that on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to your job and your employees is to be commended. The city is grateful for all that you do to make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June sixth, two thousand and sixteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Chris Clemmons. Would you come on down?
You've been there before. I'm not much of a speaker. I'd like to thank the mayor for this. I've seen him give this to a lot of people that do a lot of good things for the city, and I'm proud to have one also. I got a lot of good guys that work for me out there and hope to keep doing it for a bunch more years.
And we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright. Man, that's the fun part of having this job.
Can I make a couple of quick comments?
You certainly can.
One on Chris Clemmons. I've worked with Chris for a lot of years, and he's absolutely deserving of this award. He's stepped up and shown his leadership abilities. He's taught me a heck of a lot over the last fifteen years. There's been a couple of times without him. I may not have made it to where I wanted to be, so I appreciate that, Chris. And I also want to mention Pearl Payne. Pearl went with me the first year that we had the Burlington Games, Burlington International Games in Burlington, Ontario. She led a bus, and she done a fabulous job. Not only did she lead a bus, but she found me two other people to lead buses. We took six buses that year, and she was godsend because we were having a lot of difficulty finding adults. She just done an amazing job. We didn't lose a single kid out of the three hundred-plus.
That's always a good thing, councilman.
She led the whole group, so I do appreciate her use. You were right on when you made notice of these two people. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Well, I'll tell you when I'm gonna get this right. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual miscellaneous finances, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have four resolutions. The first resolution approving refund of liquor license for Spirits and Dreams LLC doing business as The Crazy Coyote. The second is authorizing internal loan from General Fund to Tax Increment Revenue Fund. The third is a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the east side of Cottonwood Court, extending from Wine Guard Drive to the north approximately sixty-five feet. The fourth is a resolution establishing West Burlington Avenue from West Avenue to Division Street as heavy truck route. And we have two set dates for public carriings on June twentieth. The first is consideration of an ordinance resoning a portion of twenty-four hundred Sunnyside Avenue to include a PUD, Planned Unit Development Overlay Zone, for Arbor View Estates. The second is consideration of City of Burlington Neighborhood Stabil- Well, I'm having a hard time. Neighborhood Stabilization Program, zero-eight-nsp-zero-zero-three-eleven-nsp-zero-zero-three. Alright, made it. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed from consent? I see none. Counsel?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Yep, we have a motion to approve all list under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second that.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
This is time set for hearing for consideration of a voluntary severance of territory located east of one thirteen, one twelve Valley View Lane, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made in the huckeyes prescribed by law. Mr. Tisland?
This was a request by the property owner, Stephen Zager, to vacate the property. There's actually two properties there. The larger ones, the triangular-shaped piece. The request was based on lack of access to the property from any city right-of-way and city property, and also the lack of utilities that serve the property. There is a small ten-foot strip that goes with the property to the west, thirteen-twelve Valley View Lane as well. That would go along with this severance. So it would be the combined two properties. Currently, there are no city utilities that serve the property. The closest sanitary sewer is on Crystal Drive. That ends at the cul-de-sac on the north side there. In order to hook onto that, I'd have to gain an easement through private property as well as install a lift station to be able to be served by that sewer. City water ends just before Valley View Lane. From that point on, it is all private sewer line. So the closest two sewer and waters are, I guess, through a ravine and then considerable amount away, though there is a private water line there. So based on that, the surrounding properties to the north and west are also in the county. Valley View Lane's a private drive. It's a narrow, about twelve-foot wide paved surface that comes back and winds back to the north. But the owners of the two properties, Steve Zager and Patricia Anderson, both signed the request to sever their properties from the City of Burlington and become county property. With that, if you have any questions, I can try and answer that.
Any questions from the audience? Anyone? You really look excited tonight. Counsel?
I want to know why. Why you want to leave the City of Burlington? This is the first I'll tell you.
Stephen Zager, fifty-seven, sixty-four Plant Crest Drive, Burlington, Iowa. The only reason why I want to leave the City of Burlington is I can't get to the property from the City of Burlington. And like the planning commission said, it's been sitting there for like twenty-five years. I think it's actually a leftover piece from when they did Crystal Drive. So the owner of it came to me years ago and said that he couldn't develop it or use it, and asked me if I'd buy it. So I have access to it from Valley View Lane. And it's more of a ravine than what it showed. It doesn't show actually the ravine there. If you walked out down the backside of that from Crystal, you would see that there's no way you can actually do anything with most of the property. Because I own the land down behind that, my thought was, number one, I didn't. It's kind of become a dumping ground and a weed patch, so I've already gone in and started cleaning it up. And, you know, my belief is that someday that somebody out in that area is gonna spend some money, which would put people to work. So I'd like to see if I can't figure out how to get a house on there and do something with it. But I have, right along the roadway that goes down there, there is utility, so I've got power there and natural gas right up, very close to it also. So I guess my choices are to leave it like it has been or try to do something with it. And I can't access it from Crystal. Like, he said that, you know, I'd have to have an access agreement. I've asked if people would like to allow me to put a roadway in, and I'm not getting any encouragement from any of the people that live out there now, so.
Why does putting that in the county then address that concern?
Well, by putting it in the county, I can grant them access from my road to go to that property. And I don't think that they want to have, I don't know how it would benefit them to have part of a parcel in the city and part of it in the county. I could potentially sell the whole property down there as one large acreage, which might encourage somebody also. So I think it, one, if it did go into the county, I could put it in a septic system. And I'd have water, private water line out there, so. I've looked at a lot of different ways, and I can't think of any other way to get to the property. That would make, Bob, that would be affordable, for one thing. Like you said, you'd have to have a lift station and a bunch of other stuff. I'm not willing to go that kind of expense.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Well, the only downside to this is that to get to Valley View, the only way to get there is to go through via Cliff Road. And you've got to go through the, you've got to go through the city to get access to Valley View and to get access to Cliff Road. The Cliff Road is in the county. Kind of created an island out there almost of county properties that only have access via the county road.
I used to live out there, Tim, and my wife's parents lived there for a long, long time. And that's the reason, actually, we ended up buying the property was that we didn't want to see it go any further downhill than what it did. So I bought it kind of at a butts. Actually, it's right behind my wife's original parents' home, so that's why we bought it to begin with. So I think it has more potential. I've really examined it pretty closely if we turn it into a county piece of property. It's like a neglected stepsister out there right now because you can't get at it. And the taxes on it are about a hundred twenty-five dollars a year because there's nothing there, really. So I think the choice, as I look at it, I could walk away from it tomorrow and there wouldn't be any skin off my back, but I'd rather see something happen than to see nothing happen. And that's what I'm trying to present to you, that putting somebody to work building something versus a piece of land sitting there that you can't access doesn't really benefit the city, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Zager?
Not for me.
No.
Thank you. I just want to say for the record, I just hate to, I hate to give any city property away, but I really don't see much inviting on this piece.
I didn't, I wasn't excited about asking for it, to be honest with you, but I couldn't figure out any other way to get around it.
About two and a half acres.
Right. And most of that, Tim, is ravine. I mean, if you walked out, it's just. The other problem with it not to get into more nightmares, but the water flow that goes down, Crystal Drive goes right across that lower ravine there, that's another thing that makes it almost unusable from the city perspective. And that goes around there onto the golf course.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close?
Your Honor, a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, a resolution approving the voluntary severance of territory located east of eleven-three-one-two Valley View Lane, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Move in second. Let's take a devote, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This is the time set for hearing for consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Art Guild of Burlington, Inc. for encroachment in the right-of-way at three oh one Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made in the huckeyes prescribed. Mr. Tisland?
This is an encroachment request to place outdoor seating on the north side of the property at three oh one Jefferson near the corner of Third and Jefferson Street. The art center is looking to have an outdoor seating area based on their recent renovations and offerings at the art center, having a gallery lounge there. This is something under our encroachment agreement. We do allow encroachments in city right-of-way on highly-trafficked areas. We do require a minimum of six-foot unobstructed sidewalk clearance along the encroaching area for pedestrian traffic. Any periods of extended non-use, the encroachment shall be removed from the right-of-way and not stored upon the sidewalk area. The encroachments shall meet all the requirements of the encroachment policy. We are looking at any potential changes. Have had some more requests or, I guess, inquiries into what possibilities would be for outdoor cafes and different things like that. And so that's something we're looking to bring forward, any changes or updates to our encroachment policy in the next month or two. Allowed encroachments would include chairs, tables, planter pots, and enclosures, a rope or railing, and otherwise related items to allow for outdoor seating adjacent to the building. The area we'd be looking at would be in front of the windows here just to the east of the doorway entry into the art center on Jefferson Street. So the primary thing from our encroachment policy is maintain that six-foot travelway unobstructed for pedestrians.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
Eric, did you say that if changes are made, then they will have to adapt to those changes?
Yeah, I think we just want to, from a procedural standpoint, have them follow as well. That's part of the agreement. Not looking at any major changes that would significantly reduce what their options are, but just so that if we have a regular inspection or anything, that we're following the same for any outdoor cafe.
Personally, folks, after my granddaughter's graduation yesterday, we went downtown Iowa City, and there were a number of outdoor seating. And it was, it's neat. Something should be encouraged, I think.
Yes.
I think it goes right along with what we're trying to do in downtown Burlington anyway, so I'm all about it.
That and mine, I have a motion to close.
Take it.
It's closed. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, a resolution authorizing a permanent encroachment agreement with Art Guild of Burlington, Inc. for encroachment in the city right-of-way at three oh one Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Move in second. Let's vote it out.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance, an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property at two fifteen Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Take it.
Mr. Tisland?
No changes from previous reading. Again, this is a request to vacate the dead-end right-of-way portion of Summer Street to the west, east of two fifteen Summer Street, twenty-five-foot-by-fifty-four-foot portion of the right-of-way. It would allow them, I guess, access to a garage or construction of a garage on their property as well. There are no public utilities within the right-of-way and no plans for future extension of it as well. So it's a kind of a spot that doesn't serve much of a purpose in this area, other than to the property owner at two fifteen Summer.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
In that case, Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property at two fifteen Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver or preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property at two fifteen Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Move in second on the amendment. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
And has amended.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay.
Your honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance, an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located west of the property at fourteen twelve Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Mr. Tissler?
Similar to the last request, uh, no changes from the previous reading. Uh, this again would not affect any utilities, there are no public utilities under it. Would, uh, bring his, uh, existing shed and fence into conformance being on his private property if it were to be vacated, uh, so it'd allow him to expand his property by twelve feet to the west.
Is there anybody that has any questions or concerns from the audience? Loretta? Just checking, okay. Counsel? Questions or concerns?
No.
In that event, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street, right, street right-of-way located west of the property at fourteen twelve Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located west of the property, fourteen twelve Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Pardon?
All right, move to second, let's, uh, vote on the amendment.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, and as amended.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
All right. Is there a resolution action?
I have a resolution accepting downtown parking study for the city of Burlington.
The parking study has been discussed over the last couple of years. I've had Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission has, was, performed the study on our behalf. Uh, there's quite a few staff, community members, downtown partners especially was involved in this as well, uh, in evaluating our current parking. We had a lot of volunteers who put a lot of time into going down and, uh, doing counts of vehicles in different locations at different times of the day, uh, as part of this whole process. The council has had the opportunity to have the plan presented to them. Uh, it is on our website and is available for folks to be able to take a look at. There are several recommendations that are in that, some of them cost money, some of them don't. Uh, this resolution basically is accepting the study as presented and would form the basis of ongoing discussions or plans that, that, uh, will be brought forward or at least considered from our staff, downtown partners, and other interested, uh, people in, in the area. Most likely probably vested members, uh, in parking in the downtown area. But this will form the basis of some of the decision-making that will go on as, over the next couple of years.
Are there any questions or concerns from anyone from the audience? Counsel?
Not for me, I'm glad we've got the study.
All right. Let's move.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving reimbursement for the Imagine Committee's indoor sports and recreational facility conceptual designs and final construction cost estimate for fundraising.
Second?
Yes. This is a follow-up from, the presentation from the Imagine Committee last week, uh, in regards to the indoor recplex. Uh, they have continued their efforts, uh, as I think it's mentioned in here, they performed a feasibility study, uh, this last year, we helped to, to fund that. Uh, they're at this point coming forward with a request for us to, uh, fund some conceptual, conceptual designs as they go forward with, uh, trying to see if they can't raise the funds necessary to make this a reality. Uh, the money that they're looking at was the, was out of the funds that was s- set aside, that was donated to the city, um, specifically for an indoor recplex. Uh, as they talked to the donor, uh, this last week, just to verify, he was very much in favor of the funds being used in this manner. Uh, and we would recommend that you move forward and approve, uh, the drawdown of up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the architectural drawings.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council satisfied?
Sure.
Okay, let's vote on it.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, this is the time that we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there anyone that has any comments? Mr. Dean?
Yeah, Mr. Dean? I am, uh, Dean Finacy, I'm in Burlington, Iowa, two one one seven Northern Drive. I'm a Brintorium. Uh, basically, I'd like to wish all of you a happy, I know it's late, Happy Memorial Day. The reason we celebrate is because of what we're doing here tonight. And that's for the people wanted to us have their family do this. I think you all do a good job, you know, I don't hear that often. Uh, about parking, uh, I worked at Hope for Years. Uh, the fire station, there was a parking right next to it. The people, uh, the people raised money for that be free parking. Now it's, you have to pay it, so now it's pretty much vacant. I don't know if you knew that or not. But, uh, but I still say that we need some, uh, we need some, we need some housing for people like me, low income in this town. I still say that. Uh, number two, that, uh, when are we gonna start on that new police station? Anybody know when it's gonna be starting up?
We're kind of at the, at the timing of U.S. Bank. Uh, the preliminary timing is for, they're hopeful of being in, into construction this fall and being done and completed and out of their existing facility by May or June next year. Our goal would be to begin the remodel at that time, and we're looking at a nine-to-twelve month process to get that completed. We're hoping to get that done right about March two eighteen, right?
Yep.
Correct, chief?
I bet you they're real happy to. I voted for it, I, I was, you're taking my bank away, but, but, uh, I voted for it. And I ran a paper, but basically, I was here before about Apollo School, and I don't know who set it, but basically, you want to make sure they have the money upfront. No, they won't get it back. And basically what it said, if I, I was still learning to read and write, but it's those words I don't know, that if they haven't done it a year from now, it's gonna be basically torn down. And that was, I think it said, and I think that that's a good idea. Because I'm like this, I went there to school there. Now I hear there's ghosts in there, but anyway, that, uh, I went to school there. I'd like to keep it, but if it's gonna stay vacant for another twenty years, I'd rather see it being torn down. Because there's, there's probably a lot of old buildings. It takes a lot of money and very expensive to try to remodel these old buildings. And it's not cheap. Uh, I can't think of anything else. Oh, yes, you may laugh at this, but right now, there's a controversy. I'm gonna ask you to do one thing, keep your bathrooms, one for men, one for women. Keep them that way, please keep them that way. But I'm on say this, I'll beg to grant, may the Lord Jesus Christ watch over your decisions, give you, and give you wisdom and guidance, and peace be with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. God bless you.
God bless you.
All right. Any other comments from the audience? Reverend Starling?
Reverend Starling? Five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. And, uh, I'm, uh, back again, we was here, I don't know, three or so weeks ago. And, uh, talking to our city manager, I brought some letters down today and hoped that, that you would have time to, uh, look over them and, uh, maybe, uh, have made a decision. And this is concerning Gladys White and Devon White Park. And the last time I was here, I think it was a little misunderstanding, uh, concerning, maybe the approach or whatever. It was only, I was only here to ask three questions, that was all. I didn't come to pass judgment on this, city council, or beat up on anyone. I just came to ask three questions. And seemed like it, uh, got a little out of proportion. So, I presented a letter tonight, uh, to the mayor, to the city council, and to the parks director, I believe. And basically, all it was saying is it gave history of Devon White and Gladys Park. Gave history about slavery, emancipation, proclamation. I gave reason why, I'm speaking myself, I'm not speaking for anyone else, I'm speaking for myself as a taxpayer. And, uh, why I identify myself with Gladys White and Devon White Park. Being activists, being, uh, African-Americans, uh, who we are proud of and grateful for the work that they did in their lifetime. We asked also, way back sixteen, seventeen years ago, I was asking the question. Maybe I didn't ask the right part. Why, uh, we can't get any more power to feed out from the outlets to the various vendors? And, uh, I got words, we can't, uh, uh, you know, have any more power there. That's what I got, I, I don't know who it was, been years. And, uh, so it seemed to, you know, just leave it alone, go ahead on, so do the best you can. Or you get your generator, but yet you pay taxes, you, you know, so. So that's, as far as I know, that's still a problem. Last year, there were others took their things and, and, uh, went home. And I was for one, very disappointed, you know? And that should not be. Uh, and there were, there were some sitting right here, were right down there. And, and, and they know the, the problem that was going on. So the next was the water fountain, that's been a big, big issue. I mean, other places, I went around town, the parks, there were nice fountain, water running off into the drain of the sewer wherever you go. That one, you, you go there, water running on the ground. You really need a, a board or something to walk on to keep water from getting all on your shoes and walking in the mud. That shouldn't be. I don't know how many, since we were here last, visited, uh, Gladys White and Devon White Park. Is there anyone?
That what?
Did anyone from the council visit Gladys White and Devon White Park since we were here?
Yeah.
You, you did?
Yeah, I, I haven't since you were here last. I haven't since you were here last.
I did.
I've been there plenty of times, but...
Okay, anyone else?
Just to drive by, I didn't actually get out of my car and walk there, if that's what you're...
Well, I'm sure that you, you, uh, didn't see what we supposed to have there, that water fountain. That's what I was told last year. And I think that's where one of the problems started from last week, because I didn't accuse anyone. I thought I was coming to the right place to ask the right people. That was all, it was just a question. And I believe, you know, I believe if you tell me something, I believe, you know, I'm looking for it. If I tell you something, I try to be a man of my word. I have, I have places here in the city, when the city come around and say, "Starling, you need to do such and such, you will." I get to it, else I'm gonna get fined. You know, it's just a matter of holding somebody accountable. I don't know who all needs to be held accountable, but I'm just saying. So that's one of my concerns. I was told that it wouldn't be this way next Juneteenth. And I understand that it was supposed to be taken care of, if I'm not mistaken, when I was here last. The fountain and the upgrade of the electricity. The next one was I wanted to ask about a shelter for the Gladys White and Devon White Park. I visited around some of the other parks and just kind of making comparison. And, boy, that's a awful nice one, old that Perkins Park. I mean, you may not agree with me, but it's, it's a nice one. The other one was torn down, and then here's a new one, and then, uh, nice bathrooms, nice water fountain. Up at the other park, a nice water fountain. But I don't see the fountain that's supposed to be put at Gladys White and Devon White Park, so I hope somebody will answer that for me. Then, my last one was, uh, concerning a shelter house put down there. I know we just said a little bit about that last time when we was here. And you said it had to go in the budget, and that's fine, that's, that's okay, we, we can, we can live with it. That may be years to come, but at least, uh, you know, we hope that the council will consider that. Maybe put a shelter house up there, probably down on the, the east end towards the housing area, somewhere in there. It'll probably attract more people to the, uh, to the event that goes on, uh, into what's just called a Juneteenth event. More people to the city, uh, more food vendors. That's gonna bring in a little bit more tax money, gonna bring in more, uh, permits to the help, from the health department. Because right now, I don't know if there's anyone want to participate, I just, you know? People get discouraged. And, uh, you know, you get discouraged when you don't seem to get any progress. You don't seem to, anyone really listening to you or paying you any, any attention, you know? I think if I'd been one, I'd been one of the first ones down there to see what this man is talking about. Uh, we're ready to do, I thought that's what I heard the last time I was here, that it would be taken care of. If I'm wrong, uh, I stand corrected. Now, so I'm gonna a- ask the council, what, what, can you give me any kind of answers tonight? On mainly the two, the shelter house, I, I, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was even encouraging to even put up a, a canopus or something. There are people just standing in the hot sun, well, bring you on. Uh, that's no, that's no, that's no way to, uh, address. No one said that, I'm just, I'm just speaking, speaking my mind, that's all, you know? But you go elsewhere, you have, you have shelter houses, you have plug-ins for electricity, you have all kind of nice benches. You go there, you know? Maybe if you haven't visited, if you, if you haven't been down there, maybe you just don't, you know, understand what I'm saying. But I practically went around to every park, almost. South, the one on the, the, uh, on Sixth Street, right off Sixth Street. Yes, the one over Sanders, over there, that's, uh, that's someone else, some private parties did certain things. And that's understandable. But it, that's all I'm presenting this to the city council. I didn't come to beat nobody up, I didn't come to accuse, I just come to ask mainly those two questions. And I hope the council can give me some kind of, uh, encouraging word that between now and eighteenth, the fountain will be there. I don't know if anybody know about, anything about the fountain? Because it came from the city, it came from the city employer.
So are you ready for your questions to be addressed?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna sit down, I'm gonna sit down in just a few minutes. And, and I'm just wanting to, you know, see if you could give me info, information, some information on that. And also, also on the upgrading of the electricity. Those are my main two questions, questions if you could give me answer, thank you. Those are my, my main two questions, questions if you could give me answer, thank you, appreciate it.
It'll be out a little bit. As.
Eric, did you have a conversation with the applicant for the Juneteenth celebration?
I'd spoken to Reverend Dial on, on the celebration, and then the information on that sheet that talks about the electric and water, and sent that to him directly, and told him if he has any questions on that, he can certainly contact me. We had phone conversation, email conversation on that, so I think I sent that to him a couple weeks ago, or a week and a half ago or so.
And it gives a breakdown of what we can provide, and it's at that location in terms of the number of roasters and the number of, can't think of what the other thing you have on there.
Crock pots.
Crock pots. The fountain down there does work, the, there, are you looking at doing an upgrade though at some point in the future?
Yeah, yeah, it's something, we talked about in the past what it does cost to do it, but we didn't have that money funded, and that is something we are looking at, playground and some other minor improvements to the park.
So that, that hasn't, wasn't on to be replaced for this year? You do want to get it replaced?
Yeah.
But the one that's there does work, there's a, but, but there is, is a need to see, see that replaced as time goes on to a newer one.
Are, are they gonna be, all, all I think they need, really wanna know right now is, is what I'm getting is, are they gonna be in a, in a position to, to, to have, are they gonna have water, or are they gonna be, are they gonna have enough electricity for, for the event?
And what can you say in regards to the electricity for, I mean, I don't know what the needs are, I didn't, never looked at the special net.
Hundred amp circuit at the park, three twenty amp outlets are provided for use at the park. There's a, I think, forty eight amp circuit for the lights that are there at the park, so there, there are three outlets, twenty amp outlets that are provided for use at the park. But that does limit how much they can do there before it starts to trip breakers.
This is no different than a year ago, right?
No, and it's.
There have been no changes.
No, yeah.
I spoke with, I spoke with the Lion, and they, there was, there was nothing they could do, but they, because it's on city property, but they, but they said that they were willing to work with Brayden on giving him some direction on, to making sure that they didn't have any outages. I don't know how that, how that's.
Apparently, nobody has sent you any, all the information on that, is, is what, nobody's, nobody's given you information.
And I don't know, did you have any conversation with, with Brayden?
We'd talked, we'd met at the site just to see what the facilities were there, and there could be some updates done to any of our electrical in the city. It just would take some money, and I guess knowing what the use or need is at those parks. It's similar type of outlet situation to South Hill and North Hill Parks, a similar sized park, but, and we can, any, any park could be upgraded, it'd be a, a cost to it, and what the use is, whether it's for one event or for year-round use or different things, so.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Say, President of NAACP. I went by that park before I came over here, and the water fountain is really low to the ground. For an adult, it can be hard to get it bent down, almost use it. And like you said, it is water running directly on the ground, it's not going down on sewer. So on Juneteenth, if it's a lot of people using water, drinking and getting water from there, then it's just going right on the ground, 'cause it's on the ground now. There was like two kids that were drinking out of it, and it was just, comes off a little silver chrome thing, and then spills right on the ground. And it just sits there, 'cause it's on pavement, and mud on the other side. So it does need to be fixed and upgraded, but I don't know how much time you guys talking about as far as before we have Juneteenth. And we're glad to have the park, but I think to benefit those people that live over there, it should be upgraded. It would benefit the neighborhood and the kids that live there. Thanks.
One of the, one of the things that we talked about too, and mentioned to Eric, that we need to have happen, it isn't gonna happen for two, within the next two weeks, but to be able to come forward and talk about what the overall plan is for that park, along with some of our other parks, I don't know how we'll plan on having that addressed, but kind of look at what are the upgrades that we have set up to occur at that site? That we, that, from a staff perspective, what's been put forward and put in place on the timeline. But for other sites as well, and that would be, I think, a good spot for you to take a look at what are we getting done, and what do you think needs, needs to be looked at to be altered off of that. For that to occur in a way that you're looking at not just that, but kind of thinking through your park system as a whole, Eric needs to be able to have a little bit of time to get that put together. I don't know if, if a July timeframe would be doable for getting that done, but in the next week to two is not, it's just not the kind of time that he can get that accomplished. The timing right now, and I apologize for the, the group, I don't know where Brayden is on doing some of this stuff, but this is a time where they, where we run into one of our other big constraints from a property maintenance perspective. We've committed, we've tried to limit, to some extent, this, this, the new contract that we just entered with Steamboat Days, we put some hours limitations on them, because kind of recognizing that our time, we, it is too, too much devoted towards Steamboat Days. We need to be able to have staff who are able to put time towards other things, but regardless, almost all of their time over the next two weeks is wrapped up into that one event. So that puts some limitations over what can be done, but that doesn't mean that Eric and Brayden can't still work on what can or can't be done with the, with electric between now and then down there.
I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see some, some worked on what can and can't be done. I know that we can't meet every need, but I will give them this, they do have the Juneteenth every year, and they had it last year, and they did have some problems. And I, I do think we need to, we do what we can't, at least, what, what we can do. I know that there's some things that we can't, but I, I think we need to do what we can do to, to make sure that that water problem, to the best that we can handle it, is, is taken care of, and that they have, that they have power. I mean, it's, to, back to, to what was mentioned about the shelter and that sort of thing. Yeah, that, I do feel, I just wonder where I stand, I do feel like that's something that is down the road, just because the park doesn't get used that much. I drive past there all the time, and the park doesn't get used for that. The reason why there's a shelter at Perkins is because it gets used all the time, people are lined up to rent it, so it pays for itself. Anywhere that we have a, a shelter, that is not, or anywhere that we have a park and there's a shelter that's not getting used, or that's not, if there's not a need for it, I guess is what I'm trying to say, then there's not, there's no demand, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't work that way, we're not gonna put shelters just in every park.
My name is Jose Winters, I was here the last time. Just to address the council of what was really going on down there, I brought a video of it, you know, to show you what this fountain looked like since you didn't visit. And it is a post with a piece of tin wrapped over it, with two nails sticking up out of it. If you'd like to see it, it's only three minutes of your time. You can put it on screen so you, everybody can see it, if you want.
If you wanna leave it with this, if you wanna leave it with this, and everybody can.
No, no, I, I would like for it to be presented if it's possible, so everybody can see it.
Can you, can you do that?
I can, I can see.
So, the, the issue with the, the issue with the water, I'm getting two different things.
Yeah, well, when you see this, when you see how this water is really running, I'm gonna tell you what it reminds me of, and this is nor, 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 I hope I don't offend anybody, but it remind me of the South in Mississippi, when we had to bend down and straddle something to drink water from. That's what it reminds me of. If you can get that video to play, you'll see what I'm talking about. I'm not from Merrillton, I'm from St. Louis, but, you know, I've been here for twenty some years, and as long as I've been here, that park has been the same. And my understanding from last year was that, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna say with it, he said, "We have a three thousand dollar fountain that we have, and we'll be there by two thousand sixteen." I, I quote that, am I right? But we haven't seen that fountain, and he said it would be in place by two thousand sixteen, by the time we turn around to Juneteenth again. And here we are at Juneteenth here now in two thousand sixteen, and it's not there. But not only that, the, the water fountain is just not feasible for any older person or, or a young person to be drinking from. And I went to the parks, the other parks, they got the nice, like the South Hill Park, it has a nice little pretty, little bowl and everything. Where the water is running into the bowl and draining somewhere. And then, and then the issue with, I'm not concerned about the, the tent in there, all of that, but the outlets. You got three outlets.
But you have to, you have to remember though, that park is used once a year for something like that. I'm just, I'm just saying, you gotta remember that, you gotta remember that.
But I'm, I, I mean, okay, I understand what you're saying, but we have one day as being black for Juneteenth. It's celebrating the Juneteenth slavery thing that happened. And you came to count for one day? Give us one day to be free, to do something for ourselves. I know we ain't come a long way, but we got a long way to go. I know you might not understand that, but that's, that's the truth, you know, and it's not being, I'm not picking out anything, being prejudiced about anything, it's just that facts are facts.
Can you get that to play?
Can you get it to play?
I thought it started here.
And could you stop it when we get to the fountain, so everybody can see it, please? I think we're going here, right now, we're walking up to the, the electrical box.
And they're gonna have you squared away on electricity, that's, that's not gonna be a problem on that day. The only, the only, the only problem is, they're gonna have you squared away on electricity. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you, I'm gonna have you come up and give me your name and address, please?
My name is Nikki Pearson, the fourteen fifty-one Cleveland Avenue. The only, another issue that we have is with the healthcare. We have to have water down there when you washing your hands, when you preparing your food to put out, to grill and everything, and we don't have water access. So we have to bring water down there either in jugs, and have it to a right temperature, or either we have it, bring it from home, and I don't think it's right for us to have to transfer water from where I, where we live at, or buy water to, for safety and sanitation down there, so.
I don't know how to fix that problem, I don't know how to fix that problem. I, I don't, and I, I don't know what to say, I mean, all I can say is, on, on that issue, that's, that's a, that's a big problem, and I, but I mean, it's a big problem in regards to, how are we supposed to get, you know, how are we supposed to get water in, in a, I don't know, I, I guess I need to.
Yeah, I'm John, when you see, see if you get to.
I'd like to see that fountain again, I don't remember it even being that short.
There it is, right there, by the tree. That's the one right here in South Hill. See how pretty that is? That's South Hill Park. There ours is right there, stop it right there, please. Can you stop it? That's it, Gladys White.
Okay, but it, but it's.
You see how low that is? I'm six feet. That's right here. And up under that little tin part where you see this cupboard right there, that's where they have a spigot that we use a key, that we have to hook a hose into if we wanna get some water, you can't see it really. Can you run it a little further?
But that work, but, but it works though, as long as you got a hose, then you've got.
Now, stop it right there, okay? See the ground right there? All of that is saturated with water. So how are we supposed to get, now, that's, that's where, it just, that's pure ground, sand, dirt. How are we supposed to stand there to drink water? In the mud. Now, that's a three thousand dollar fountain?
I don't think that's the three thousand dollar fountain.
Okay. I, I, I'd just like to know where it is, and you know.
Hey, we're not gonna be able to work this out here during this meeting, but, but, but I, I hear you, I hear you.
Okay.
But I wanna, is there, is there anybody else that was, that needed, anything that they need to say on this?
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Say something on this, because this is important to me. I still wanna know where the, where the three thousand dollar fountain is. That's what I wanna know. Somebody need to give me an answer. Where is the receipt, 'cause it was told to me last year.
I have no idea.
Somebody, well, why would a city official say that? There's supposed to be a three thousand dollar fountain. You see, this, this is what I'm talking about.
Is anybody aware of a three thousand dollar fountain? Is anybody aware of a three thousand dollar, Mr. Tisner, are you aware of a three thousand dollar fountain?
I, I know that's what a, a new fountain costs, I don't know, if that was stated that we're gonna have one in place, then, then we need to do that, but I know we've stated that that's what a new fountain costs, is three thousand dollars if we were to order one.
Said it would be there, that's what, it was told to me, and you know it. I'm not trying to put nobody on the spot, but see, this is what happens. We're gonna have to be truthful. I'm held to the truth, I think everyone else should be held to the truth. See, this is why people get irritable and get upset, because you have people sitting in key positions, and you have other people
Okay.
acting like they are, you know, slaves.
How, how much time do we?
And I, we could've had this meeting, we could've had this meeting during the week. Nobody called, I did contact, I did contact the city official here, and he told me what to do.
I'll tell you what.
That's the reason I'm here tonight and brought what I brought, but this could've been taken care of in a private.
But for a deal like this, it would've been better off if we would have, it really would have.
Okay, but, excuse me, Mayor, but you all said it, you said, you said, we could have a, a meeting with you all, you all said it, and we were waiting.
We called and tried making.
We, we were waiting.
But nobody said we were gonna have a meeting.
It was suggested, it was suggested that you would have, maybe have a meeting with us. I know myself.
Okay.
You know, that was what was suggested, it was also just suggested about a canopus, that was suggested. And we have a problem with the electricity, why couldn't, why couldn't the city can't set some generators down there? You know, put a can, uh, you know, for these people standing out there in the hot sun, underneath the shade tree. Man, I'll tell you, I am so sick, it makes you sick. And you can say what you wanna say, you can think, I mean, but when I leave here, I'm gonna be suspicious of what's going on. And it shouldn't be that way. They said it was gonna be a three thousand dollar fountain down there.
I don't know about the three thousand.
Well, this is a city official sitting here. Where else, where the money, where the receipt? Nobody's saying anything. So I'm gonna be, you know, I'll be curious, I'm, I'm, I'm losing confidence.
Well, I'm just gonna ask you to wait till after Juneteenth before you lose complete confidence. I guess that's.
I, I've lost confidence, I mean, you know, somebody need to be investigated. Why would you tell me, why would you tell others it's gonna be a three thousand dollar fountain there?
I understand that, I understand that.
Well, somebody, somebody need to be investigated. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to cause a confusion, but I'm just going on what, what was told to me, and I believe it. And here we are, you, 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 I mean, you take, you take care of the people's money, you don't, the city, you don't, the council. You make the decision.
Is there, is there any other comments on the, on the Juneteenth?
I've got some comments in general about this topic. We, we have a, we have a Parks Advisory Board, which, you know, we're, we're not getting anywhere through this process, the process that we're following now. I, I think if we go through the process that, that everybody else does, and that's getting the, the Parks Department involved, and, and coming at budget time when we're talking about capital improvements, and making it part of the process that we go through, things get, things do get accomplished that way. I, I, I understand when people come before council and ask for specific things, that's happened for the last twenty years, and sometimes we're able to accommodate, sometimes we're not, but never at that meeting are we able to accommodate. We try to get it put in the budget. There's, there's reasons why Perkins Park was done the way it was done, and the reason it was done was because where the bathroom facilities were at were hidden, and we were putting a lot of money into replacing toilets, because the locks were getting broke, the doors were getting broke open, and the, and the facilities were being destroyed. So they got moved out front, they got put in a more secure building, and, and, and it was budgeted. There's, 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 there's actually grants available that fund most of the projects that we do in the parks. And the work, the, the thing, the improvements that's been done over the past twenty years to Deedwin and Gladys White Park, I, I know that there's, it was said there's been no improvements done for the last twenty years, but that's not true. There's, there's been playground equipment put up, there was a skate park there that has been moved, there was, uh, uh, improvements made to the basketball courts at one time, and, and, and it's part of that process, part of that, of the park process, that, the budgeting process that we go through. I also want to mention, we, we've got to be careful about what promises we make, because I know that when the MS Society, uh, puts on their annual fundraiser out at the park, they bring in their own generators, and they bring in their own bathroom facilities, and they bring in their own hand washing, they bring in their own water to drink, um, and, and they pay for it through that fundraising process. The Alzheimer's Association does the same thing, they have their event out at Crepeau Park. And I know that many of the other events that people apply for, go through the process and apply for, that they either bring the things that they need, they pay the city for the things that they can provide, picnic tables and that sort of thing. The events that are, that are, that are held on Jefferson Street, there is no running water, there is, there is electricity, there's no running water, there's, there's no bathroom facilities. Those that want to have those special events have to pay for those, or, or provide those, or they get a hold of somebody within the city that can, can help them and sit down and discuss it and walk them through the process for getting that, and maybe even give them some guidance on where they can go to get some, uh, get that help that they need to get the grants and, and that sort of thing. I, when, when, uh, when somebody needs shade at a particular place, I had three kids that were married in the city parks, and they needed shelters, and the city wouldn't provide them, we had to provide them. It's the same thing, it's, it was a one-day event, we provided those shelters. We didn't ask the taxpayers, the rest of the taxpayers, to pay for it, so, you know, I, I, I think that Juneteenth is a right thing to have. I think it should be celebrated. Uh, you know, I, I'm ashamed of our past, but I'm proud of our, our present and our future. And, and we, I, I, I think having a park down there, period, is a, is a great thing. And I think when it was named at the encouragement of Gary Thomas and others to the Deedwin and Gladys White Park, I was mayor at the time, and I was proud of the fact that we done that. Uh, or, I, I was on council, I'm not sure if I was mayor at the time or not, I can't remember what year that was, 2002, whatever. Um, but I know I was, I, I participated in it, I was glad, I, I knew Deedwin and Gladys White, and they were tremendous people. They were tremendous people, they, they deserved to have a park, they deserved more than a park to be named after. They, they were leaders, they were, Deedwin White, White was a, uh, was a powerful individual that probably wasn't much bigger than Jim Furno, but just, uh, just his mere presence was, was powerful. They, they were good people, you know? There, there's, there's a process, I'm sorry, we can't do everything that, that is being asked of us, we can't, we certainly can't make that decision tonight. Uh, and, and, and I'm sorry if there was a miscommunication, I remember the conversation about a $3,000 fountain, I don't remember anything about it being, saying it'd be put in, but I do remember the conversation about a $3,000 fountain, and that the problem that the city was having at the time about replacing it was because of the vandalism that was occurring to the, to the, the ones that were there. And, and, and that they had, had, had to have been replaced two or three times over the previous year or two, so. Um, there's, I mean, there's a process, there's a reason, and there's, and there's hope that we can make things better for everybody.
Is there, is there any kind of a temporary thing, Eric, that can be done to keep the water, uh, so the ground doesn't get saturated like they're saying, is there any kind of little, something we can do there?
Well, we'll evaluate that, this, we can see whether it be some sort of surface or rocks or something to allow it to drain better.
Yeah.
I got an idea for that, I'm gonna go down and look at it.
Okay.
I may have just what they need.
Good.
I'd like to make sure we do everything we can to make sure it's a, that it's a good day, that the day goes by well.
Yes, sir.
You know, I understand, you know, what we're saying, I understand, uh, but, uh, I'm on this side, and I'm this color, so, and, uh, that's understandable. And there are advantages that others have had for over four hundred years my ancestors didn't have. So don't ever forget that, you know? And I, for one, have to live with that. And it wasn't my ancestors did it to the other race, it was the other race did it to my ancestors.
Okay.
So there's a lot of things that happen.
You know what, I gotta, I gotta say this, I'm black too, I'm black, I, I wake up black, I go to bed black every day too, so I mean, you act like, I'm just saying, you're just saying like I'm not with you, I'm
No, no.
I'm the same color, I wake up black every day.
No, I, I, I was just saying this, I didn't say, I didn't say what color you were. I was just saying this, you know how I feel, you know, when you say, "Well, they go get water, they go get this, they go get that." Maybe that, uh, maybe that all of us could have, had we been for, free for, our ancestors free for four hundred years, you know? And, and when they, and when the thing did come out, my ancestors did get a mule and forty acres. Yeah, that's all I'm saying. I hope you understand what I'm saying, you know? So I'm four hundred years, uh, behind everybody else, and you're trying to get in the race and catch up, and when you have those that seem to, uh, keep pressing you down, "Well, you need to do this, and you need to do this, and you need to do this," you know? And, uh, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things maybe people could do, maybe they would do, if they had confidence in those that's supposed to be their leaders, even me as a minister, you know? So, uh, some people will get, get tense, some will get generated, some won't, some may not be able to, you know? So we still have our differences, you know, I'm still who I am, you're still who you are. And I don't think you can apply that to, to, to everybody. Some will and some won't. All I'm asking for is, I just wanted to see, uh, me, I came as one person, one vote, one voice. I just wanted to see what I was told, and it has not been done.
Thank you.
So I, I, I don't know if we're gonna look into that, are you gonna look into it, Mayor?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody has anything to say, uh, regarding any other topic, any other questions or concerns? Mr. Tisner? Kathleen? Annie?
Well, um, let's see, what day was that, with the, uh, was it Saturday morning?
Saturday morning.
Yep, we, uh, I was there to witness the wet-down ceremony of the new equipment down at the fire department, and that was pretty neat to see. I know it gave me goosebumps to see something so special happen. Um, eighteen years since you've gotten something new like that, and it was, it was pretty cool to see. Um, another thing, negative, I guess, um, there's been some, obviously vandalism everywhere, but I know down at the gazebo down by the river, there's been people who plant flowers, and usually just days after they plant them, they find them thrown onto the rocks and down by the river, and I just, you know, it's too bad to see that throughout our, throughout our town. I mean, if you're gonna vandalize something, why let it be something that's trying to make our city more beautiful, but I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing, uh, Mr. Davidson?
You have somebody on KBR?
Uh, I'm doing Wednesday, whoever can come with me.
I can go.
Can you come?
Sure.
All right.
Also, at the, uh, ceremony on, um, Saturday morning, the, the Alex Club was handing out this information about the Flag Day. Flag Day is next Tuesday, but they're having a celebration, uh, Saturday, June 11th, at eleven o'clock at Aspen Grove Cemetery, and I told them I'd mentioned it this morning, or this evening. Um, pretty neat, they're gonna have the, the American flags lining the Aspen Grove Cemetery like they do on Flag Day, it's really a neat thing, and they're gonna have a ceremony and talk about the different flags that represented the country for the different years and so forth and so on, so, um, it should be a fun time. That's at eleven o'clock at Aspen Grove, and there'll be somebody there to tell you where to go.
Kathleen, please?
Nothing at this time.
City manager?
Um, last, last Friday, you had the pool opening, Eric?
Oh, yeah.
The new liner in it, uh, the mayor was able to be down there and, uh, hand out a couple of awards, and those were some neat awards. You had some individuals in our community that put a lot of time and effort into raising funds to get that pool liner project to happen. Uh, they helped to secure sixty thousand of funding?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, and the, the rest coming out as starker?
Starker, and then some city program funds as well.
Uh, so it was nice to see those improvements get done, there are a lot of more improvements that need to happen at that pool over the next few years. Uh, I know that Eric's got a couple that, that are lined up over the next couple anyway, but not enough to do what really needs done there. Uh, with the pool opening, uh, South Hill Neighbor Association did have a grant from Case.
See, yep.
Uh, and they used a portion of that funding that they had for a free day at the pool, uh, on Friday, with, you had hot dogs and some, and some other...
DJ and...
Yeah, DJ was there, it was a neat event, about, there were three hundred kids, I think, probably about, when I was there. I heard rumors of several hundred total during the course of the day, I'm not sure what the final count was, but it was, uh, it was, it was a nice, nice participation level for the, for the day. It was suggested from someone, I don't know if that was the mayor, or someone had suggested to him, uh, the idea of, are there other entities in the, in the, in the community, other businesses who would be interested in sponsoring a day at the pool similar to that?
I'm gonna piggyback on that, we are looking for businesses, if you're watching, if you're watching, we'll put you in the Hawkeye, and I'll give you a special bracelet and all that good stuff, we're just looking for somebody to sponsor once a week for the kids.
And, and I don't know how to say how excited the staff was to be able to have that kind of participation on Friday, uh, and, you know, it was really possible because of what South Hill did to make that day happen. So, very, very appreciative for their support for making a good day down there. Um, we talked about having a resolution to support for Miller Valentine on the agenda, I don't know if you noticed that it wasn't there? Uh, you, you noticed?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Eric received an email from them asking that to be polled. Uh, one of the things that they are seeking funding from, and they mentioned it in their request, was brownfields and grayfield credits.
Yep.
And they had, they've been in discussions with Iowa Economic Development Association, or Authority. Uh, it's much easier, I don't know, it's I did. And they've discovered that for them, as they've looked at it, they see that as a little bit harder route to go to make that be successful. They're looking at other ways to make a project be viable, uh, until they can see that path forward, they don't want to ask you to commit to this, the resolution to support on that. And, I mean, and, which is understandable, and I think a, a good thing from their point to, to do. So, that level of a project may still happen yet this cycle, um, it may not. So your backstop on that is still, uh, in, in a year from now, if something doesn't come through, and this was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, uh, are you committed to, to ending up demolishing that property and cleaning it up for reuse? Um, but we'll see, we, there's still quite a bit of time between now and when that funding cycle happens, but this is really, their desire to poll this really talks about how hard it'll be for them to get a project done. And I had one last thing. Uh, we did, do have a, a guest in the room, uh, who will be an employee as of tomorrow, so Nick, if you want to come up and introduce yourself, Nick McGregor, will be our new Assistant City Manager for Public Works.
Hi, City Council Mayor Campbell.
Look so excited, Nick.
Welcome, nice to have you here.
Yeah, I'm excited to, uh, hit the ground running tomorrow, so, uh, if you have any other questions, I'll, feel free to answer them.
We're ready for you to hit the ground running.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
You got an awesome crew out there.
Yeah, I, evidently.
You'll, you'll...
I do have a question for you after, after the meeting, if I talk to you.
Okay, yep, no, not a problem.
We wish you well, though, glad to have you here.
Thank you, I, I'm glad to be here.
Good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. That's it.
Okay.
Honorable, I move that we adjourn this meeting at this time.
Second. Kathleen?
Scott? Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Lemine?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye. This meeting's adjourned, thank you.